The Monday, February 24th, 2025 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otteway.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel.
Here.
And Mayor Hanley.
Here. All right, that brings us to the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements tonight, so that brings us to boards and committees. Up first, we have an appointment. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the appointment? Commissioner Otteway?
I move to appoint Lauren Lust to Iron Ore Heritage Trail Recreation Authority for a term ending 4/30/28 and reappoint.
Oh, you have to use them separately.
Sorry, good, thank you. I move for the appointment.
Pro Tem Schlegel?
Second motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, Commissioners, do we have an emotion on the reappointments? Commissioner Otteway?
I move to reappoint Addie Bouchain to the Board of Review for a term ending 2/1/28 and Emily Tobin-Lavoyd to the Public Art Commission for a term ending 2/26/28.
We have a motion on, or sorry, do we have a second? Pro Tem Schlegel?
I'll second that one as well.
Any discussion? Commissioner Otteway?
Huge thank you to everyone for stepping up. As you see all the time, we have vacancies for so many boards and committees. We have a lot of you here tonight, just in attendance. Take a peek at our website, see where you can step in and be a part of the community. We always need people to do that. It's the best way to be involved. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first public comment session, portion of the evening. If you have a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and physical address. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight?
Good evening, my name is John Kangas, 128 West Fairbanks Harvey. I'm actually here representing Marquette Township this evening and our township supervisor, who apologizes for her absence, she is recovering from a medical procedure. But anything you might ask of the township, hopefully I can try to answer. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. And this moves us to the consent agenda, which is a roll call vote. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I move to accept the consent agenda as written.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Oh wait, it's a roll call vote. I got it, just a little late.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteway?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to new business. Our first item is the Marquette Township offer letter for the water filtration plant. City Clerk, can we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The city has been supplying water to the township on a limited basis for over 60 years through various terms of agreement. Recently, Marquette Township officials approached the city and inquired about becoming part owner of the water assets used to supply water to the township. To further explore this possibility, the township utilized a mutually agreed upon consultant, Raftellus, to study the feasibility of a partnership and determine the value of assets for the water filtration plant and distribution infrastructure. The results of the feasibility study appear favorable for both parties. And based on that study, the township is offering to purchase 16% ownership of the assets for $2,332,000. Next steps would include staff negotiating the terms with the township and drafting an agreement that outlines fiscal responsibilities of each municipality. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, direct city staff to negotiate an agreement with Marquette Township for a partial acquisition of the city's infrastructure used to supply water to the township and outline responsibilities of each municipality following such sale to be considered by the city commission at a future date. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, do we have a motion? Pro Tem Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to direct city staff to negotiate an agreement with Marquette Township for a partial acquisition of the city's infrastructure used to supply water to the township and outline responsibilities of each municipality following such sale to be considered by the city commission at a further date.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess because this is like a first run, I don't know if there's anything further that staff might want to feed this great audience of ours tonight. Feel free. Or?
If you're fine with that, I'll just, I'll provide a little bit more context. And this was something that was, that the city was approached by the township, I would say a couple of years ago even, and then by the time that the study was completed and when we were looking into all of the details of this, we're bringing it forward today for just that initial, continue to proceed before we really work on an agreement, which will have a lot of those details and come back before the commission. But from really a production standpoint or distribution standpoint, the plant currently is rated just over 7 million gallons a day. And we currently average about 2 million gallons a day, sometimes three in the summer months. And that does include the limited amount that we are providing to the township right now on a different basis or on a limited basis. And this would actually structure the agreement a little bit more definitively and then also allow for some of that investment from the township into our system if we need to continue to do improvements to provide that to them. But the township really did put in a lot of work estimating how much they would need for their current usage and then also any potential growth that is, you know, in the works or in the know or projected out based on some of their knowledge and their study as well. So when we look at this, this is really coming into many different, or putting into many different factors to come up with that proposed 16% ownership. Now, when the study was completed and it's going to be coming to a year in age for that study, we are looking at how we can apply any inflation or anything like that. So that number that we referenced may change, 16% is what it's going to stay, but it may change a little bit. And that is something that we, we're already starting those discussions to explore. But this is really a win-win for both municipalities. It's a great sign of the partnership and the relationship that we have with the township in many different ways, including, you know, here with the water filtration plant. It is going to be somewhat similar to how we have an agreement with the wastewater treatment plant as well, which has three different municipalities that are, that are in that relationship, so are in that partnership. So this is going to be a little bit different in that regard than it's only us in Marquette Township. Does that provide a little bit more information? We have plenty of capacity, if that's the question as well. And we are looking at some infrastructure upgrades in order to continue to provide that water out there too. So certainly prepared for it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Larson?
How much work is needed to connect the two systems? And maybe that's for you, maybe that's for John, I don't know.
So we currently, and Mayor, if you're okay, also if manager John Kangas would come on up too, maybe he has that information, but there's already water going out to that and there's, there are some improvements that need to occur with one of the, the.
Booster station.
Booster station, thank you. I was like, it's not a pump, I'm thinking of the wrong, the wrong direction here. But the booster station that, in order to make it more efficient to get that out towards that area. But I don't know if you have some information on that as well.
I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'd certainly like to give you enough context on why this is important to the township. We currently have an unlimited supply from the city to serve as much of the township as we want to. But we also have a need to make sure that we have water security in the township. Some of you may know there is some history behind this, which hasn't always been favorable for maybe even either party at times. This would help solidify the water security of township residents, which of course is where the growth is going as the city builds out. We're feeling the pressure. We know we have to grow, we need to have a water source. We do have a well system, but it's a confined aquifer and we fight for that water in a nice way with the Marquette Country Club. So if they're having a very dry summer, we don't have the production out of our well system. We have an opportunity to expand. We had a phase two project in the works before I moved to the township as, as the, both the superintendent of public works and now the manager, that would have added a phase two, which is another well field up by Morgan Meadows. That would have cost about the equivalent of what this offer is without getting the first drop of water to a customer. In real world numbers, that doesn't make sense. And again, it is also a confined aquifer, but it is groundwater, which our partners at the state EGLE would prefer. That being said, the filtration plant that the city has is the most preferred treatment method. So if we already have the connections in place, why not use it with a mutual, mutually agreeable solution? That's what this proposal is.
Well said, thank you. Any more questions while he is up here? Commissioner Mayor?
Do either of you know what the, the infrastructure improvements are going to cost and who's paying for those?
If this agreement makes it to the finish line, we would pay for 16% of those costs, including 16% of the booster station upgrades at Lincoln. That's the booster station that was built to most efficiently get water to the township, but is not currently used that way. And the reason is it's old equipment. So if those pumps fire up in that booster station, BLP gets a nice little upgrade in their bill. It's a demand charge. And that's just the way the system works, right? If you put too much of demand on the power system, they have to bill you more for it. If the pumps are upgraded, those demand charges won't come into effect as easily. Currently, the water goes through the mountain tank, which is a much longer route. And that's not the infrastructure that the township would propose to purchase a portion of because it's, it's more than we need.
So how much for the grid?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't answer that question. I don't know what the Lincoln upgrade numbers are because of those numbers city staff has, but I would guess it's similar to what our Cox booster station upgrade would be. We're using the same consultant to come up with the preliminary engineering costs. And I'm thinking that's around three to four million, but don't quote me on that.
Don't quote you on that yet. That booster station's going to need updating regardless of whether the township does join us or not. It would be best to upgrade that as well. And also just to clarify that the township is, the 16% investment will only cover the infrastructure that they'd be utilizing. So any of the other infrastructure that has nothing to do with servicing them out that way will not be part of the responsibility of the township, just to make that clear. But I also want to mention that if there is an instance where perhaps a township has a sudden large development or usage and we don't have that capacity, we do have the footprint right now at the plant to grow or to expand that in order to add on to capacity. And that would also be something we would be looking to the township to chip in on. And that would be their understanding as well.
Any improvements at that water treatment plant, we would have a 16% responsibility for. Even if it's to add capacity that we don't think we need, I think that would ultimately be part of the agreement.
All right, Commissioner Otteway?
What kind of effect could this have on city taxpayers from the standpoint of, could they see water bills go up? Could they see taxes go up from this? Could they see just a higher cost, you know, to extend water to the township? Because if you're a city resident, you're probably sitting there thinking, why do we care about the township, right? Is this going to be something that has a financial effect on them? And maybe explain a little bit of the why.
And vice versa as well. I think the township residents are also wondering some of this as well. But so really, this has no impact on the taxpayers or the tax rates. This is fully funded through user fees and through water rates. And what this actually does is allow the plants to be more efficient in spreading out the, some of those fixed costs across a larger group of parties. And so there is this opportunity for that to kind of spread out and have a little bit less. Now, again, I don't want to say this is going to lower any rates or anything like that. That's not something we like to, you know, promise. But when we look at how our fixed costs would be allocated, that would be a greater number of users. And we are selling more water and we are operating more efficiently. So this is not intended to have a negative impact on our ratepayers or users, customers. And the same thing with the township is this would allow for a more stable rate offered at the same as what we would have because they are owning into this.
Just to tag on to that, you know, you asked, why should a city of Marquette residents care? At the basis of it, we're getting money for the buy-in, we're getting cost sharing in the future. And then if you look at, you know, utilities in larger cities, maybe that you have their own, but lots of times these are shared. If you look at major metropolitan areas, these are all shared facilities across multiple cities. This is what you do. It makes sense to have utilities with capacity to be serving as many people as possible to reduce those costs.
Absolutely. So just to clarify to you, like ultimately to simplify this, if you're a taxpayer in the city of Marquette, this is not going to cost you anything. All we're doing is extending water to the township and they're going to be ultimately paying the same rate we are for the water. So it's a, it's a win-win considering we have the capacity to do it. I just guess I wanted that clarified for, for the public who may listen at home and say, okay, this seems a little weird. They want our water. What is this going to mean for us? Doesn't mean anything. Ultimately, it means we have the help, let's give it to our neighbors and let them pay the same thing we're paying for it. So it sounds like a great idea.
And they're still getting water right now.
Right.
So this is just under that other mechanism, I think.
If I may roughly quantify what that looks like. Half of the township's water is currently coming from the city. The other half is from our own well field, which is, by the way, the best tasting water in Michigan. But we're proposing to take that away from some of our customers by increasing the amount of water we purchase from the city. That's just a, an industry thing that we're proud of. We did get an award for it a couple of times. But this allows us, by upgrading the Lincoln Pump House and our Cox Pump House, to reduce the amount of water that we have to produce from that confined aquifer to 25% of what we need and possibly zero if we need to. So if that aquifer dries up completely, we can buy all of our water from the city.
And build capacity for that.
Correct. And it, it would be within the amount that we're looking to purchase currently, knowing full well that if we have to increase it to 20% ownership in the future, that we would come back to whoever's sitting here at that time to do so.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Right now, you're getting 50% of your water from the filtration plant here.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, approximately 1.2 million gallons per day?
I wish I could tell you that number. I'm not superintendent of public works, but that's probably right.
Do you, in your experience or knowledge of what might, you know, in your ability to predict the future, how much are you going to want in 10 years? If you're, let's say you're getting 1.2 now.
We've projected out to 20 years with, let's call him a national level consultant. It's not necessarily a consultant that does a lot of work here, but they do a lot of work in this area. And I, I would say that the 16% is probably more than we're going to need in 20 years, by a little bit. It's a conservative estimate.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I don't, I can't equate that to a million gallons per day off the top of my head, unfortunately.
Can you estimate if you're going to need more water?
We absolutely will, based on what we already know.
My concern is the capacity of the system. And right now, the city can easily handle what the city needs and your current needs. But will the city's system be able to handle capacity? I think right now we're.
Commissioner Gottlieb, if I can just jump in, I think John is saying they did an estimate out to 20 years for how much they're going to need. And the 16% they're going to be buying in is more than that 20 year.
1.2.
Right, I understand that. What I want to make, I'm looking down the road at 20 years. Will they, is this contract going to be written such that if they are taking a much larger percent and forcing the city to expand its filtration, this will be the township's dime, not our dime?
So that would be, that would be a specific clause that we would be looking to include into the agreement is if it is to increase by a certain amount, then yes, we would be looking to have those discussions. I think that's pretty standard and something we may have even within our wastewater treatment.
And one point I'd like to just make is that when we have fixed costs on our water bills, a significant portion of that, I mean, goes into a reserve. So we plan for plant upgrades and maintenance and replacements. So we're always doing that. And over time, you know, we're always projecting out how much usage is, you know, being done and how much will be needed. And we're looking at the developments that are coming forth. So we'll be planning for that all along the way if we see that need increasing.
I want to hear what he's going to say.
If I may. We know the water treatment plant has a capacity for 7 million gallons per day and it's not even close to needing that currently. If the township creates the need to expand the filtration capacity beyond its current footprint within the building or even beyond the footprint that's available to add within the building, if it's solely based on our needs, we would assume that the agreement would say we pay for that. If it's a joint need because we all have a greater demand, then there would be another clause that says we pay 16%, the city pays the rest, something along those lines, right? Hopefully, we have really good advisors helping us write this agreement where the concerns you have are properly addressed because we don't want to have to figure that out 20 years from now or whoever replaces us.
That is my concern, that it'd be written into an agreement.
It makes sense, for sure, absolutely.
The capacity would have to double or the, the usage right now would have to double by then and that would be including us and the township too, in order to get to a point where we need to expand on that. But that is something we continue, we monitor any needed, you know, infrastructure upgrades at the plant pretty regularly as well. So that's something that is on our mind. So that's a really good point.
I do anticipate the township growing because it's a great place to live.
We agree, yep. Hopefully not uncontrollably.
Hopefully.
Let's see how good our staff is.
You only have so far told Nagani. Anyone else? All right, with that, it brings us to a vote. Commissioners, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our second public comment of the evening. If you haven't spoken already, please clearly state your name and physical address. Public comment may be three minutes per person. Do I have anyone for public comment? Anyone? Okay, public comment is now closed, which brings us to comments from the commission. We will start with Commissioner Davis tonight.
Thank you. It appears to me that the Boy Scouts are here, right? Working on your government badge? Well, thank you for coming. I'm really glad you're here and I hope that you fulfills your requirement. Also, it looks like there's some northern students here, yes? It's getting close to the end of the semester, you got to get this one in. You know, I guess to both of you groups, this is a good meeting to attend because our agenda was short and our time is short, so you, we're not ruining the rest of your evening. But thank you for coming and you're always welcome to come here. On our consent agenda, we approved a public hearing for our, the draft of our master, our public, our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I really want to encourage people in the community to take a look at that. It's on our main website. Review it and provide the comments back to the Parks and Rec Department and the consultant. I also want, I reviewed it previously and then there were some revisions, so I've been reviewing it again. And it's a pretty daunting plan. It's very large, so you might want to do some searching on it. One of the things that I recognize, and I know that there's a couple of people here interested, very highly interested in a dog park, is that we have had the need for an off-leash year-round dog park for a lot of years. And I really would like to see the, the city work on some sort of arrangement for that to happen. That's all my comments I have.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes. I want to spend a second talking about the water system updates, the AMI to Metro upgrade. I want the city residents to know that the system being replaced is apparently outdated and losing functionality. And although the city will be putting out approximately $44,000 for the new system, which includes one year worth of a subscription to the system, about $12,000, and we will have to pay about $12,000 a year thereafter, we will actually be saving $18,000, $6,000 a year because our current subscription is about $18,000 a year. So doing the math, the city will be saving after the initial outlay about $6,000 a year. The lifespan of the system is hopefully going to be seven years because that's what it's going to take to pay it back. But with all, we all hope that we will actually be saving money in the long run and getting increased functionality out of this new system. So yeah, there is an outlay of cash, but hopefully in the long run, this is going to pay off well for the city. If you have any questions about that, ask our city manager because she can explain a lot better than I can. I just did the numbers.
Commissioner Larson?
I don't have anything tonight.
Pro Tem Schlegel?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything other than what a beautiful day it was today and it was great to see everybody out and about. Hope you were able to get out and take advantage of it a little bit. Let's pray that winter's not over yet. We've got a lot of skiing to do yet, lots of outdoor activities. But I would just ask that when days like this occur, watch out for the new activity. On the way here, I saw four people on bikes, three of them were in the street, one of them was on the bike path, e-bikes. And there's lots of action, so, you know, lots of foot traffic. Just pay attention a little bit closer with. Just pay attention a little bit closer with the high-activity days and look out for our neighbors. Thank you.
Good, Your Honor. Thank you, city manager. I just want to acknowledge our public works team and the volunteers at the UP200. Public Works, for years, was, was prepped and ready to go for getting the UP200 race ready to be. And then they had a two-year hiatus. And I wondered, do these guys even remember how to do this? Because it is one heck of a chore to put all of this on. And it was an overwhelming yes. The efficiency, the just ease of putting everything together downtown really helped me remember how amazing the UP200 is. I got to spend time down there and, and really wanted to make sure we, we put that first and foremost. A thank you to the volunteers, thank you to the public works team, obviously police and fire being there and all of our first responders being there. But public works a lot of times gets forgotten, so we wanted to make sure we, we said something to, to say thank you to them. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was going to talk about tonight. Watching them set it up, tear it down so efficiently was amazing. And it was also really nice to see all of the people in town supporting the local businesses in and out of each shop. It was great to have the UP200 back and I really hope that we have enough snow in years to come to continue to have the UP200 in Marquette. Other than that, I will kick it to our comments from our city manager.
It was quite the eventful morning this morning. That is very different than what we are here seeing tonight with the weather. And so it's just a reminder that if it is incredibly icy, if the schools are closed for ice conditions, that usually means it is very, very dangerous outside. So take it easy out there and give some proper space to those sanding or salting trucks because they cannot always stop that quickly either and they are moving around in ways that perhaps you might not expect. So just please give them some space. And they did a phenomenal job today. And the sun also helped on that one too. But they did a great job on getting us out as soon as we can to get to work. But please keep in mind that it's also sometimes a surprise when we wake up to that kind of ice. So, and with that, that's all I got. Thank you. So if you're looking at planning ahead, which is good for you, the next community office hours will be on March 12th, and that will be from 10 to noon at the Peter White Public Library. Again, that's just an informal way to come on, stop by and have a cup of coffee and discuss whatever silly things you got. And we're looking to maybe do some information out there for the changes with the solid waste contract, making it a little bit more of an informational type meeting. So please keep that in mind, but you're always welcome to contact me with any other topics too.
All right. With that, we are adjourned at 6:30 PM.